Members of City Council, please attend a call meeting of the City Council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM, Tuesday, October 9, 2012, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Ms. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Heretic?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mr. Whitehurst?
Here.
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Mr. Goffrey?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. We have just one item for you tonight under Hot Topics, and it is a follow-up report on the traffic signal design at the intersection of High and Court Street. I'm going to ask interim city engineer James Wright to come to the table and give you a follow-up report and presentation on that item.
I can't get his hands back.
I'm about ready to lose a finger.
We've all been there.
We gotta turn the overhand on that. Glad you're gonna find the remote. Oh, there she is.
No, you...
Just let it walk.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. I'm here to give you the update on the signal project at High and Court Street. Over the past five years, the Traffic Engineering Department has made it a priority to upgrade its assets to become more compliant with current state and federal regulations. With the assistance of our on-call traffic engineering consultant, the city has been able to obtain over $15 million in state and federal funds to use towards these efforts. Improvements include remote communications to signalized intersections, safety improvements, and pedestrian enhancements, as well as signal re-timing efforts. By the end of next year, approximately 25% of signalized intersections will have received significant upgrades. The bulk of the funding for these improvements has come through VDOT. One of these intersections is the intersection at High and Court Street. This project is a VDOT locally administered project, which means it is subject to review by both VDOT and the Federal Highway Administration. Parts of this review includes NEPA documentation. NEPA documentation is used to analyze potential impacts of a proposed action. This process also involves environmental review and review by the Department of Historic Resources. VDOT approval is required prior to moving on to each project phase. Improvements at this intersection will include new decorative signal poles with mast arms at all four approaches, pedestrian signals, new pavement markings, ADA ramps, video detection for signals, new controller and signal cabinets, and wireless interconnect. Since this project is located in the Downtown Design District, it also requires review by the Downtown Design Committee. This project was approved on April 5, 2011. We have a couple of pictures here. This is a picture of the current signal. A picture of a standard traffic signal. And a representation of what the approved signal will look like, the decorative pole. Signal project at High and Court Streets is paid for with federal funds designated to bring signals into compliance with current regulations. This project has been vigorously reviewed at both the state and local level. With that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Okay. Mr. Moody?
I guess my question would be, is that the signal that there have been some complaints about?
Yes.
And in that process, was it presented to OTBA and Downtown Design?
I know that it went to the Downtown Design Committee. I do not know if it went to OTBA.
And Downtown Design was good with it?
Yes, sir.
I guess there's some question about if what we're seeing now is the same thing that they approved a year ago.
Yeah, that would be the next question.
There's some question about whether what we're seeing now is what they approved a year ago.
Yes, the representation.
That's what I don't think.
You changed your mind.
Yeah, yes, sir.
I think this is one of those exceptions that we need to look at. With those arms there, it actually obscures the historic photographic places. You can photograph the monument and those four corners. It should stay that way. What happens if we change our mind and don't do it like it is on picture?
At this point in the process, the project is actually awarded. We have contractor that's waiting to actually go to this intersection. You'd basically end up killing the project, and it would be removed from VDOT's books.
And eating the cost?
We'd have to... It's been a reimbursable project, so the project, contractor does the work, the consultant does the work, we submit, we pay them, get all the information back, and submit that to VDOT for reimbursement. We've been reimbursed so far to the tune of approximately $50,000, so we'd have to reimburse VDOT that money.
So there's no opportunity for a change order?
Because of the process that it goes through, it would have to go back. You'd have to start all over again, at the very beginning. But the project has existed.
Let me just ask, so we make sure we're clear. On page 7 is what we're looking at installing, not page 6.
Correct.
Page 6 is where you...
Page 6 is what is it, Effingham Street?
6 is what you normally see. You'd see this at Effingham or any other new street every time. This is what the signal will look like. The new signal will look like.
Well, what does the signal look like that...
Currently?
Yeah, currently, or the signal that wants to take the place of the one that we're already doing.
Page 5 is the current.
Page 5 is the current.
Page 5 has none of the historic power to abide in.
Whole amount of signal. And page 7, the decorative signal with the mast on.
I think what you need to do is take a picture, photograph, of what's there now, and one with that crazy arm out there.
And, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part of that.
Mr. Whitehurst, hold on a minute, right. Go ahead, sir.
I'm saying you need to take a photograph on all four corners of what's there now. You can clearly see the courthouse, not the courthouse, what was the courthouse? What used to be the fire station, all those buildings that people liked to photograph. And try doing it with that.
Ms. Ryan.
Okay. One of the things, I think that was what made those corners so unique, because they still had the characteristics of what the historic area of old towns are all about. And a lot of people would come into our city and make photographs, because it was unique. And then when we look at the heritage and the age of our city, it tied right in with the character of what was in the past, but yet we were using it in the future, which made us unique. This looks sort of standard, and that area at the Four Points down in there, all these, I think every child that came through the school system made a trip down to look at that and through the courthouse section. That's unique in our city.
Let me just ask, is this the modern-day version of an old historic design? Is that what their interpretation of this is? Or did you ask that question?
It's the most decorative, compliant pole that they could find at the time that they were doing the research.
Okay. And this was the post that was presented to the Downtown Committee?
Yes, sir.
And they approved this on April 5 of 2011?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so...
I said Franklin Street.
I guess the issue is, if these items come through our process and we look at it, and why do we now in this dilemma where you're either gonna have to lose funding, or upset the apple card, and you're hitting 11th hour, a contract's been awarded, and now we want to take this matter under consideration? I mean, is there... Mr. Moody? Mr. Cherry? I mean, where are we at with this?
Well, I asked the question that, you know, we have a process. Certainly went through a process. It was apparently approved. What we're looking at was approved. Now we're hearing after the order has been placed, the contract has been let, that we don't like it. And not liking it, as I understand it, is gonna cost us $50,000 and lose any future reimbursement. Am I correct in that?
Correct. The total project, just for this intersection, is about $313,000.
$313,000. I don't...
If this is what went through the process and what was approved, I guess the question that came to us was, this might have been different than what was approved in April 2011. If this is what was approved in April 2011 and went through the process, then I'm okay with it, because that means our citizens committee that we appointed said this was good.
I concur.
And they live in the area. But if this is different from that, then that's another story. But what you're telling me is, this is what they approved in 2011.
I don't see where we can eat $300,000.
Ms. Ryan.
Then what I'm hearing is that this went through the public review process, and this was what was brought back to us at that time as being the revision by those signs. Because I knew I was out and I missed some meetings.
No, ma'am. This went to the Downtown Design Committee.
On the fifth.
Right. And those are the folks that actually went through this process and approved it.
And came up with that.
And I think what Councilman Moody and Cherry are saying, and I think I concur, is that our folks have reviewed it, we've looked at it, we're at this point, I think we need to move forward with it.
I don't have a problem.
I think it, you know, if there are questions in the future on things like this, we need to get out in front in the process and participate, whether it's a citizen that's concerned, whether it's a councilperson. There's times and opportunities to do that. And after you've awarded and let the contract, and in the middle of getting ready to do this, is not the right time, unless it's something that's gonna cause harm.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I kept the exception. I was out during part of that time. I apologize that I was not here to hear it, and I'm hearing it now, and that is why I'm questioning it.
Oh, no. It didn't come to us.
It didn't come to us. This is the first time it's come to us.
It went to the design review.
So I didn't miss it?
No, ma'am, you didn't miss it.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear.
I don't want to be called a rubber stamp. I'm not gonna rubber stamp anything. I think we need to slow the process down, take the photographs, see what we're looking at. And we need to move slowly, and if it means we're gonna... If it's what I think it is, I know I'm right. Taking a photograph of somebody from Chicago, or wherever it is, talking about poison and shows it to your friends, I want to do that. I want to preserve that. So I like to say, slow down, take the pictures, see what it looks like, so you all become comfortable, and then I will vote no.
Ms. Moody?
Well, I think if I'm hearing the presentation right, April of 2011, it was approved. Is that correct? So the process has been a slow process, and now, I guess, some folks that don't like it, and I got a feeling, if we put this up for a vote for the whole city, some would like it and some wouldn't like it. That's usually the case.
That's standard operating procedure.
And to me, it's a question now, it went through the process, it was approved. If we undo it, it's gonna be at our peril, which means it's gonna cost us $300,000, and we're not gonna get any reimbursement from the government. So I say we, you know, we did the process justice, so let's move on.
Okay. You concur?
Yes.
I concur. You concur. We have... Ms. Randall?
I maintain my right to express my point of view.
Absolutely.
And as a result, I feel as if we should have ample time to review it.
Okay. Mr. Whitehurst?
I will vote no.
Okay. All right. We have four of us in favor, so go ahead and move forward.
If you delay it, if you look at the photographs, you might change your mind.
Okay. Move forward. We've got a majority that says we'll keep going forward. Thank you, sir.
I look to Cherry. I don't have the information.
No other items for administration.
Council members, there was an item, a requested item, by Councilman Edmonds that I think he wanted to bring up.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, fellow colleagues. Last meeting, we had gone ruckus to give CCDI $114,000 to get them back afloat again. And that money was surely designated for that purpose only, because they said if they didn't get that amount, they had to close up shop. And since that time, $68,000 was diverted to pay back taxes, which left them with about $41,000. We may as well not have given, we might as well take that back too, because it's not gonna take care of what we had decided here as a council that that money would be used for. And so I think we've left them in a terrible dilemma, and also, it seems like the council in itself has been undermined in the sense of the money not really going, that total amount going where it was needed to go. And so we've hurt them, we haven't helped them, and it's made us look bad in that regard. So I feel like we need to do something to rectify that problem, so that they can get the amount of funds that we originally agreed with to help them move forward.
I concur.
I concur with that.
Yes.
James, you be recommended. Go ahead, sir.
I concur with Councilman Edmonds. We even had discussions here that night about looking into tax exemption for them as the other cities have. So it was known that our intent was not for that money to be used for the taxes. And I agree with him that we were undermined, and, you know, and I'm a little, I'm gonna be honest with you, perturbed by the way this happened. You know, for us to get an email after the fact that this money has been diverted and not done as we directed, and we are ultimately in charge here. I am so perturbed that I am of the opinion that we ought to take out the budget of the Treasurer's Office, since he took it upon himself to do this, and he knew what our intentions were. So we can take the $68,000, whatever, $1,000 for as I'm concerned, from the Treasurer's Office to reimburse them for the money that they lost. Because we can't allow people to just disrespect this body. And I consider that disrespect the way he did, because our intentions were clear.
Okay. Mr. Whitehurst?
Having been the Treasurer, he did his job. He's supposed to use whatever means available according to law to collect taxes. He did that. You know, what we should have maybe done was to get with him before the fact.
Nah.
And that's his job. That's his job.
He could go with us.
Let him finish, Wade.
That's his job. His job, he...
My job is not to get with him.
With a bill in hand, 30 days old, he can collect anything he wants to collect. No problem. You can't stop him. That's state law.
Mr. Cherry, go ahead. You got anything else?
Go ahead, let me smooth it out.
I had, when this came to light, I guess, last week, I had suggested that CCDI get with the Treasurer. I know Mr. Williams is certainly very receptive to working out payment plans. So I don't know if that was done or not. Haven't received any feedback on that. It's my understanding that we're gonna do that. Are you aware of that, Councilman Edmonds?
No.
So did anybody talk to Mr. Williams?
I did. I talked to him. And he stated to me what Vice Mayor just said, that by law, he was in his right to do it. And I explained to him that that wasn't our intent as to how we wanted that money to go. But this is after the fact. I think if there could have been some information coming to us before that was done, I think we could have settled this without having to bring it back up.
And being within his rights and being mandated is two different things. You know, he had the right to do it, but was he mandated to do it? Because, like you said, he works things out with people all the time. They pay on their taxes, there are businesses who are doing it right now. He hasn't gone in and, you know, not garnishing their receipts or anything. So maybe, he might have been in his legal rights, but was he mandated to do it? And our intentions were clear, and why we gave him this money. So it defeated the whole purpose of what we spent two days, we spent two work sessions in here, the bulk of it, discussing this issue, and for that to happen, it doesn't sit well with me, okay? So whether he was within his legal rights, he didn't have to do it.
So do we know for sure whether or not he's tried to work with the entity in the past, and this is a result of his actions, or we're assuming that he hadn't tried to work with him?
We don't know that, and quite frankly, we sit here and say what our intentions were. So, you know, to me, that's not a determining factor, because we, the council, said we want this money to go to them, to make them whole, so they have an opportunity to get back on their feet. And that process of discussion, we discussed tax exemption. What he should have done is given us the opportunity, the time, to get straight on the tax exemption, how we were gonna do that, if we were gonna do that, before he took the money from him. That would have been the thing to do. And he still would have had the right to take it, to do what he had to do, if we gave him future money. But that didn't happen. We didn't have the opportunity to do that, as we said we were gonna do. Mr. Moody asked the question about tax exemption, and was told that other cities do it. And we decided at this table that we were gonna look into that. So what was the point of looking into it if we were gonna take the money out? That made no sense, to look into it if we were gonna just pay the money out of that money.
Mr. Whitehurst?
I don't want to look like a big guy, but before I became the Treasurer, there were no payment plans. I started that.
You sure did.
He's now doing it to... I'd like to ask the city attorney to give us a sort of a thumbnail as to what the responsibility of the Treasurer is and what...
We don't need to hear responsibility, Attorney. I don't need to hear that.
What I'm saying is, you're saying the man should have come to us. He was not a part of this meeting. He was at home doing whatever he was doing. He did his job. Now, how he found out about it, don't know. But that's his job, is to collect taxes, to make money taxes. I'd like to ask his attorney to explain the job as he sees fit, and what the man did and didn't do.
See anybody around this table don't know what the job of the Treasurer is?
Hold on, okay. Mr. Attorney?
First thing I would say is that I'm not even certain that I know what happened. I'm not here... What I've heard at this table in the last five minutes is the first that I've heard that anything happened with those funds that were appropriated by City Council at the last meeting. So I would not be comfortable making any comment at all on what the Treasurer did until I know with some confidence what it was that he did. And with regard to what his roles and responsibilities are, I'm not, and his legal powers, I'm not counsel to him. He has his own attorney. And again, I don't feel competent to answer questions about what an independent constitutional officer can or cannot do. I'd be no more comfortable answering questions about Mr. Williams than I would about Ms. Morrison, or Mr. Mobley, or Mr. Edmondson.
Okay. Mr. Moody?
I don't think it's a Treasurer issue. I'll go back to the findings that we discovered, that not all cities tax their Chodos.
That's right.
We do, there are a partner, were a partner, hopefully will be a partner again. What they do is rehab homes, get them back on the tax rolls. Now, those homes that are rehab aren't just, they don't become Section 8 houses, they are sold to anybody, whether you, red, white, black, or yellow, it doesn't matter. You got the money to buy one, you buy it, and it benefits the city of Portsmouth. So in that case, I think, once again, we, our direction was clear, that we would get them back on the, back on the status where they represent us as a Chodo. So I'm for that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Bottom line is this, they didn't get what they were going to get. And it puts them in a dilemma, and to me, it puts us in a dilemma. What I intend for it to be done with, it wasn't. And so they're mad at us, that $68,000. So I guess my question is, what can we do to correct that?
Mr. Williams? Make them tax exempt? That would then make them overpay by $68,000? You'd have $68,000.
Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, I have already, on several occasions, advised City Council that under the Portsmouth City Code, as it is presently written, and as it has been adopted by City Council, you may not legally make them tax exempt. Under the Portsmouth City Code, other cities that may have granted tax exemptions are not subject to the Portsmouth City Code. You are. What you can do is appropriate money to pay their taxes. But under the present law, present city code adopted by City Council, you may not legally make them tax exempt. It doesn't make any difference what other cities do, they are not subject to Portsmouth City Code. I've already explained that to you.
We can change the code.
Yeah, we can change that.
All right. Another discussion here?
Yeah, we need to figure out where we're gonna take the $68,000 from to make them whole. You got $5.2 million now? We can take it from the Treasurer's budget, or we can take it from somewhere else. I got no problem taking it out of the portion of money that we give to the Treasurer's Office.
Can't do that.
If we can, do anything, sure we can. Take it, we can take it.
Well, because we really haven't solved the problem with helping CCDI.
Well, I think the question we need to resolve, and I don't think we can do that retroactively, is that we want to continue taxing our Chodo going forward. And if we don't, from listening to Mr. Oakesman, we need to make a change in our code if there's consensus to do that. But...
You could do that.
But that can be done retroactively. Can it, Mr. Attorney?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Still gotta find a way to...
Yeah.
We can change it for the future, but we still gotta find that $68,000 if we wanna make them whole.
If there's consensus of the body, I move we take it from the fund balance.
The excess.
You have a $5.2 million excess.
That will make them whole.
Yep. Are we good with that? Do we have it there to do it?
Do that with it?
Oh, yeah.
We got $5.2 million surplus.
Make a motion.
It's up to you to make the appropriation.
Okay.
So I guess the question is, Mr. Oakesman, would it be a similar motion to what we did at the last meeting, just with a different dollar amount?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Move the motion.
Madam Clerk?
Council members, can I ask you to do something? At this point, they don't have the money. Instead of jumping and doing this tonight, can you instruct the attorney to bring this forward as an item for your next agenda, so we can properly advertise it, and we can have the proper ordinance done to appropriate these funds? Having financial items on your items submitted by council member is putting you in a situation where when we do the minutes for future people observing your minutes, there is nothing saying what these funds are for, where it's coming from, or anything. You're just appropriating money. So at this point, they don't have it. Two weeks is not gonna make that much difference, and that's just me speaking as your clerk, but they can get this money in two weeks.
So you're saying the check hasn't been cut?
The check, the tax money has already gone to the Treasurer. I'm not talking about that money.
What were you referring to?
I'm talking about the $68,000 that you're talking about now trying to give them.
Let me, can I ask them a question?
You'd have to come up to the table. You want to come up to the table and ask a question?
It was... It's a really important business to see.
It was.
Put us on a bay of mind.
It's a simple question. Can you wait two weeks to get that money? And still be, and stop it right?
Well, I mean, it's a, well, I'm sorry. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. But as you're aware, Mr. Hadwood is in Danville right now, delivering his dissertation, so couldn't be here this evening. And that's not a, I don't know if that's something that I can answer, or... Because, I mean, my understanding is that the documentation had been provided specifically as to what those funds covered and were built from, as well as the report that the city manager had presented showed exactly what those funds were being used for.
Yeah, I just want to know if you're gonna be still in business in two weeks if we don't make appropriation tonight?
We've been going through this for three years, so this isn't anything new. Another two weeks, it puts us in a...
Another two weeks, it puts us in a very precarious position, whether it's... We make it now when people don't get paid. We didn't cause this problem. I'd like for Monique to read a report for Steve Hagwood.
You asked a question. Did you get the answer? Can we wait two weeks or not? We're trying to do something else. Not to cut you off, but we're not interested in that right now. Can you wait or not? Okay.
You can? Okay.
You can? Okay.
So is the consensus that in two weeks, we're going to have an ordinance appropriating $68,000, whatever it was that was taken from our...
We have a work session.
I don't know. Is that what we're asking here, Dr. Edmonds?
Yeah, the work session.
That's what we're asking.
From our excess fund balance.
I don't know. Is that what you're...
Yes, that's what we're looking at.
And Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe you can answer this. I had suggested that you get with the Treasurer. Was that done?
Yes, we did get with the Treasurer. There's a chain of events that happened here since the last meeting that caused what happened. It wasn't the Treasurer's fault. His obligation is to collect it.
Absolutely.
It did not have to go the way it went. I'd like for Monique to read two paragraphs for you, from Steve's report.
Okay.
Steve could not be here tonight. He's getting, he's doing his master's degree, and he has his dissertation. He'll be here whenever we need him.
And again, this is all directly from Mr. Hagwood, so I'll quote that. It states, "City Manager Keith Chandler informed me, Steve Hagwood, by way of a telephone conversation on September 26, 2012, that CCDI could receive its $114,000 in one of two ways. One, by means of a post-dated check that would be processed on Thursday, September 27, 2012, which would be post-dated for Friday, September 28, 2012. Or, the second option, the city Treasurer would provide CCDI with a handwritten check from the city Treasurer's departmental account. Mr. Chandler also informed me if the city Treasurer were to write the check, it would be a good chance he would collect the amount of the past due taxes, the $68,304, from the $114,000 allocation. I, Mr. Hagwood, emphatically responded to the city manager that he would rather have the post-dated check rather than the handwritten check from the city Treasurer. On Friday, September 28, 2012, Keith Chandler called Steve Hagwood and informed him that the check was ready to be picked up from the city of Portsmouth Finance Department. However, Jimmy Williams had diverted the $68,304 for past due taxes. My dispute then, and continues to be, why were the funds diverted for past due taxes when I specifically requested the funds be processed through the city of Portsmouth's official check disbursement routine? He closes, "Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter."
The Treasurer...
That's right.
...knew about it and took the money. That's his job.
That's his job.
Mr. Whitehurst, we don't need to pay that anymore. Mayor, we're going to have, we're going to have an ordinance in two weeks that's going to appropriate the money from the excess fund balance. In the meantime, the city attorney is going to look into changing our code, so we won't have this problem again.
That's right.
You think it...
Yes.
Okay. And do you think it's important to get this...
Yeah.
Have the Treasurer here as well to be able to, next time, to be able to discuss why he did that?
I don't think it'd be a good idea to have the Treasurer here. We don't need, we've appropriated the money. It's done now. If any of us want to speak with the Treasurer, we're big boys, we'll do it.
I understand, but the Vice Mayor makes a valid point, though, for the public. He's doing his job.
It's an open...
Mr. Moody said that, the attorney has said that, I mean, so if he's doing his job, we don't want to make sure that we don't leave the impression that the Treasurer has done something, I think you said...
Well, you know, yeah, he did, because, listen, in my personal opinion, 99% of the world's problems are going to be solved with communication. Okay? It's not that far from the sixth floor to the first floor. To talk to us. Everybody knew what our intent was, and if that intent was not going to be followed, somebody should have told us. And if the manager knew at that time, we said that night, that that was a possibility that happened, he should have told us. And I have that conversation with him when he returns from his, from out of town. But if he knew that that night, he should have phoned us up as well, because then we could appropriate it an extra $68,000 that night and not be going through this again now.
That's right.
There is a responsibility of the person that owes the taxes to meet with the Treasurer for a payment plan.
That's not what we're talking about now, Mr. Whitehurst. No, it's not.
You're saying that the Treasurer should have done something. The Treasurer was sitting in his office at home, doing what he was supposed to be doing. He took the money. That's his job. If you want to, you're right, the manager knew about it, so the manager, you can blame him. Not the Treasurer.
Well, instead of the blame game, let's move on.
We don't need to go beyond that.
Start thinking about blaming.
That's right. And everybody did not have an authority on finance as you.
So are we clear with that item? So we have consensus to do that?
Yes, we do.
Okay? All right, so the next meeting. Thank y'all very much. And, okay, the other item that I have, you guys have in front of you a resolution that I asked the attorney to draft up for us. I thought we had had some preliminary discussions on this matter, and at the last meeting, I mentioned that our sister cities had all came out against it. We knew Virginia Beach had, but Norfolk and now Chesapeake, as well as the Planning District, and quite a few others on the peninsula are expressing concerns here. So what is the pleasure of the body here on this uranium mining?
I don't know anything about it.
My issue with this is, we can't get people to support us on this no toll thing. Why are we doing anything at all? My issue right now is to have the cities to come up on this toll this year, and they won't do it.
Let me, let me just ask, why would you use the toll issue with something like this? That if our sister cities and the people have potential harm to their drinking water, why would we not stand with them, whether we've got a dog in the hunt or not? We're a region, and these are people. I mean, if you've got some issues or animosity with the elected officials, that's one thing, but why are we hurting it? You said, who wouldn't stand with us? Who are you... I guess I'm trying to ask, why are you delineating the difference?
Keep politics out of it, please.
Yeah, but that's what I'm trying to do. This is a matter of issue with the people in the region, and why would you bring and interject tolls here?
I'll bring whatever I have to bring to get these tolls away from us, but I'm saying there's no harm to us for water in Portsmouth. It's going to be coming from Lake Gas and if anything.
That's right.
I'm saying we need to use whatever means necessary to get people to understand that the toll issue affects us, really affects all the Happy Roads. Why do we always run to somebody else's defense when they don't help us?
Okay. I got your point. The issue here, though, is that there is a potential during our tough times of the year that we purchase water from Norfolk. And if the potential is for Norfolk water to be contaminated, sir, it would have an effect on us. So I think we do have a dog in the hunt, in my opinion, for two reasons. What I just stated, that if we need emergency, the opening valves to be able to help us during our drought season, one, and two, if it hurts the region, it hurts Portsmouth. So I'm having a tough time understanding your analogy here.
Toll has hurt the region, hurt Portsmouth, too.
I understand that, but if another city, or an elected official in another city, doesn't want to take that position, do you want to hold the citizens over there captive or hostage and not supporting them when it's a matter of the people?
Mr. Moody?
The city attorney sent us some information I thought was real good and factual. I guess the question is, is this indeed going to endanger our water supply? If it's going to endanger anybody's water supply, I'll go on record of supporting, taking action to do that. Mr. Attorney, would you share some of that information? And that's good information for the public to know as well.
I guess, Mr. Moody, my concern is that I really know next to nothing about the background of this resolution. I know next to nothing about the arguments for or against it. I know there are a lot of Virginia localities that are opposed to this. I know that you all had a presentation from someone from the mining company a couple of months ago, who was saying that the, that the concerns are all exaggerated, and that there is no safety risk. So I am simply not in a position to advise you about the environmental risks, or the lack of environmental risks, that might affect Portsmouth or anyone else. We'll have to say that I do have a concern about something that is as significant as this, being added to the agenda without notice to the public, so that interested parties will not have an opportunity to come here, to look at this, see it on our agenda, and have an opportunity to speak. That concerns me. But beyond that, I simply don't know enough about the subject matter to make any recommendation for you one way or the other.
So how about we defer this to the next meeting, so we do have that opportunity?
I think that'd be a good idea.
But again, I don't want to leave this discussion or anyone thinking that we're, because of tolls, don't want to support something that may endanger our region. That is not what you're implying.
No, that's what you imply.
That's what I'm saying. You want to make sure you...
That's what you imply.
Okay. So what was your issue, sir?
Okay. All right. I'll have that next meeting for you next meeting. Okay, yes, sir.
All right. Any other items that anyone have to bring up?
Well, we, Mayor, we have some information that Director of Human Resources, Tony Small Bembry, gave us. He emailed it to council today. Me and Mr. Perry received it, I guess, last Friday. It's follow-up on the independent auditor. What this is, this is a draft copy of, which would be an advertisement containing salary parameters for that position. So we need to have a consensus. If everybody's comfortable with it, we can move forward with it. If there needs to be changes, we need to direct Ms. Bembry to make those changes.
Is there any questions or comments about this? Have you all had a chance to read it, and any changes anyone would like to make?
I'm good with it.
Okay. I'm okay with it as well. Okay, you okay, Mr. Whitehurst? Ms. Randall, you okay?
I'm okay.
And Dr. Edmonds?
Yeah, I'm just reading it.
Okay.
I just...
How soon will the advertisement go out?
Upon approval tonight of appropriating the fund, we'll advertise it tomorrow.
Okay.
So is there something on the...
We need to appropriate the fund.
Is this on the agenda?
That's on your published agenda.
It'll come up tonight.
Okay. All right, very good. Any other questions or comments? Okay, just us. Oh, yes, sir.
I should note that one of the most important public officials in the city of Portsmouth has just entered the room. You may wish to recognize him.
The Honorable Johnny Morrison, how are you, sir?
The attorney is not on the oh-so.
Well, welcome. Let me just say, as a point of, yes, sir.
I was going to just follow up. We kind of got into it a little while ago over the CCDI money, but I know we have a couple of ordinances on our meeting tonight, and I don't believe the public's had a chance to digest those.
Yes, it's on your printed agenda. It went out on Thursday.
Okay, so it was on the printed, I'll take that back then.
Yes, sir.
I was going to make sure the public had a chance to digest that.
That's right.
That's a good thought, because we always want to make sure we do that. Okay, as a housekeeping note, we're going, at 6:30, I think we've already talked to each one of the council members. We will meet downstairs on the city hall steps to be able to have a brief memorial service for the passing of the Honorable James W. Hawley. We would invite all of the public that are here to meet us downstairs, so we can do this. And Mayor Hawley has been a stalwart, a leader, a person that has done a lot of great things for this city and our community and for this region. We will give each councilperson a couple of minutes to be able to make that reflection, but again, we want to be back up here by 7 o'clock, and we will order the flags to be flown at half-staff, and then we will come back up. So at 6:30 promptly, we will meet downstairs to conduct a memorial service. Is there any questions or comments? But I think I've chatted with each one about that prior to the meeting, and we're all in favor. Okay?